Welcome to the Selectman's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for February 5th, 2019. First item is salute the flag.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of January 22nd and January 29th.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded for January 22nd and January 29th, any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Department Heads and Committee Chair Updates. We have District One and District Two Road Commissioners.
Good evening, Dave Langley, District One, Road Commissioner. Got a few things there. So, we took over right after, right after Christmas. We're getting into the swing of things, we've got two wing trucks now. We've got two wing trucks, two wing, one tons with Sanders, and then we have a pickup that we use for our public facilities in these short little intersections out there. We're running somewheres between 80 and 90 yards of material, sand salt mix, for roughly 54 miles of lane road is what we take care of on the north end in here. And then usually around four or five yards of salt for, for our public parking lots and things like that there. So, was down in a sand shed the other day. We're roughly halfway through our material with our sand and salt. So, there's probably, there's probably close to 1,200, 1,300 yards left, depending on what a, a snow cycle's gonna be. I think we're gonna be outside, I was talking with Joe the other day. So, we're comfortable, but I believe we still got four, 500 yards still under that contract that if we need to haul in, we could. So, our salt budget, we're right on the edge of it for what was allocated for monies. But, we'll, we'll make that work if we need to. And it all depends on the storm and the time of the storm and how that works. So, that brings us up to date on that there. We've had some, we've had to replace some signs, our sign bandit's back. I talked to the Sheriff's Department. We've had two or three stolen off the H Road, we've got those replaced. They've been in the Newfield, they've been into parts of North Shapley too. So, Sheriff's Department's on, on board with that. So, if the public sees something in the vehicle that's slowing down or whatever, you see something isn't right, if you can get a plate number, we can get things followed up. It does cost the taxpayers money to go out and replace these signs and, and speed limit signs and everything there. So, we're, we're on top of that there. We do have a few potholes that we need to address. We had one all back in the middle of January up on New Bridge Road. I just went and picked up some, some, uh, patch in a bag. Works out real well, it's cheap money. If we went to F. I. Carrolls, you're looking at $109 a ton, never mind our trucking and our time. So, and for the District One roads, we're in real good shape. We, you know, if we bought six bags at $18 a bag, we'd take care of a few problems we have. So, we'll, we'll get on that as soon as the things dry up a little bit. So, that kinda takes care of the old business. New business, we do have a, an issue up on Acton Ridge at the Wyman Point Road, that's on the Maine-New Hampshire line. We had some water was coming in, into the road through the ditch line. We've got that, so it's recited back into the ditch line, but it is something that'll have to be addressed, you know, sometime, you know. We've got some issues there with some stumps and rocks and things there, but that can be, can be addressed, but we have taken care of the ice problem, keeping it salted and scraped down. Also another spot is up on Gopham Hill above the transfer station on the backside of the orchard. I remember as a kid, once in a while, we'd have an issue up in there. We did go up two Sundays ago with a loader and we got it scraped back, we opened the ditch up. We did find an 18-inch galvanized culvert. Got the, got that all cleaned out and everything. But some, most of that water's coming out of, off the top there. I'm not sure, I'll have to get with, with Mr. Davis, with Kyle Davis, and see where they pass, you know, as you move clear land and, and put things around, water wants to go where it wants to go. So, it may be, just be nothing, it might just be a fluke, but that's something we can look into. But, we're, we're on top of that, taking care of that. Our other real big area with water problems over on the Govan Road at the turnaround. The family that bought the orchard up on the upper end is now plowing the road up the old access road up through there. So, when we had that heavy rain a couple of weeks ago, all that water came down through, which ran down in the Govan Road, eventually made its way into Wilson Lake. We had quite a, quite a stained area. We'll have to, eventually we'll have to get with codes and go up there and, and do a, do a, a field trip and go walk to them, walk it and talk to them. They're gonna have to do something, put in a berm up or do something, because we are eventually gonna have problems there. But, that's something that can be addressed.
Where the water runs down Govan, does that, does that end up going down by the corner of Bill Shields' land? Does it come down that far?
Robin?
And ends up? Is it the path that comes down onto Eagle Road right at the first bend?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Yep.
Yeah, it would come down across Lewis', down between Lewis' and Clay. Yeah, there would probably be three times the size of this building. Yeah. And if, if, if we had the average snowpack and it was good hard snow and the rain soaked it up, it probably wouldn't have been so bad. But, this is the first year that he's kept that road, the old access road up in the orchard plowed. So, that's a quarter of a mile up that, up the hill, so that, that gives that water a chance to, to really get going. So, exactly, exactly. So, so, that takes care of that there. We do have some, as good weather comes, we did have some washouts by the transfer station, we got that taken care of. I spoke to Mr. Waltz that Saturday and said, hey, we'll, we'll get up there and take care of that hazard and eliminate it. So, we got rid of that. We'll need some, some attention when spring comes and also on the backside, that whole section up over the, up over the hill there. All in all, we're in good shape with, with the rain we had and, and our operations and stuff, so that's where we stand. So, any questions?
No.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Was District Two coming tonight?
He got the same memo.
Pardon?
He got the same memo that, and I haven't heard from him.
Okay. Well, if he comes in, we'll go back to him. Okay, any other Department Heads, Committee Chairs?
Chuck Gregory, Road Committee. Wanted to check on the HEB contract, we received a copy of that.
It's on the agenda.
Okay. And we, we did talk about the, the date of when they would have a response back so that we could have it for budgeting purposes. We did receive our second request for a private road reimbursement. We're going back and asking them for some additional information, and once we have that approved, we'll forward it to you.
Thank you.
Has the, you, it went directly to the Road Committee?
Um, don't know, did it come directly to you?
Yeah, it came directly to me. Okay. So, the last time, and, the last time it went to the Board first, you guys reviewed it, made it recommendation, then asked the Road Committee to look at it.
Yeah, we just, we just got a copy and asked.
Is this, is this the one that came to us originally, and then we said you don't have all the information and we sent them back? It's a different one?
Yeah, it's for Tattle Road?
Tattle Road. So, the Board hasn't seen it at all?
No.
We should get a copy of that.
Okay, we'll forward it to you.
Please.
But, again, we didn't think it was complete and we're asking for more information, so we could send you a copy of what we have.
Yep.
Also wanted to check, I seen something where they were, they were looking for an additional speed limit or reduction of speed limit at the junction of 11 and 109 down by the Mousom Lake intersection. Have we had anything definite on that going down, I guess from 40 to 35?
I don't know what the timeline is. It was approved to go, to have the speed reduced, but I don't know what, at what point they put the signs in to do that.
Okay.
I think they're just waiting for the ground to be unfrozen enough and send their crew down, but they said it would happen sooner than later.
Okay. And then hearing Dave and I'm sure, sure Joe will have the same thing, is, is he seeing these problems and knowing what needs to be fixed like over on Govan Road and that, if there's any chance of getting any type of even a preliminary estimate from the Road Commissioners so that we would have some kind of information moving forward with the 1920 budget would be, would be helpful. Okay, that's it.
Any other Department Heads, Committee Chairs? No, okay. Move on to old business. The conduct of elected and appointed. Are we ready to make a decision on that? Do you wanna bump it out another week?
Um, I had a chance to look over it, my only question was the gifting, where we get the gifts from Punske and I guess that Christmas gifts were okay.
There's.
I mean, it's food, it's not a, not really a tangible.
Right, there's a piece of the personnel policy then.
Item. You know, it's a gift basket, bottom line.
Um.
Which is different than a.
I don't have it in front of me, I had another question, I can't remember what it was.
Let's put it out one more week then.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, action plan, Main Municipal Association.
So, I touched base with the Fire Chief today, he sent an email saying that everything on his side has been taken care of except for the antenna inspection, which is scheduled for the next couple of days. The transfer station has also gotten a lot of prices for his side, and we'll have some numbers for you for the budget over the next few days.
Okay. Road Commissioner, Public Works Director, status?
So, we have a public hearing tomorrow at 7:00. Just looking for a final determination as far as what the Board, what question the Board wants to move forward with.
Well, my thoughts is, one, two appointed Road Commissioners. As much as I'd love to have one Road Commissioner working for the town full-time, I don't think we have the support for it. So, I'd like to shift gears a little bit and just have it a one, have it two appointed as opposed to elected.
So, what we heard back from the town was, they didn't wanna spend the money on a, a full-time Public Works Director with the, with the benefits.
Yep.
And they didn't wanna have the right to vote for Road Commissioner to be taken away.
Right.
So, this would meet them halfway.
Yeah.
Right.
It certainly would help our.
With it being appointed, it is a, an employee of the town and.
Yeah.
It would help us with budgets and estimates and just kinda keeping it.
Follow rules and regulations and.
Yeah.
Personnel policy.
Exactly. Exactly. So, I think that needs to be the gist of tomorrow night's discussion, so.
Okay.
I mean, the money, you know, to hire someone, yeah, between 70 and 90,000 by the time you add the benefits and whatnot to it, no matter how you look at it, I mean, you hire someone at 50,000, which is not a huge dollar amount for this position, for someone with some smarts, you know you're gonna throw 15,000 to 20,000 in benefits at it, so, you know, which is, is huge. The benefits alone is, it's the, I won't say it's, it's a killer to do it, to try to do it, but it's also your lure to get someone good. So, you know, and maybe we're probably not quite at the position yet to.
We kinda felt that people in the town wanted to, but by the meeting the other night, it just didn't.
Yeah.
People don't seem, seem ready, so.
Yeah, I think this might be a good, especially where we have one already. You know, the District Two is appointed and will be for the next two and a half years, so, and this wouldn't change any of that, so. Okay. On to new business. Land use fee schedule, Ken.
Good evening. So, the fee schedule we talked about two, three weeks ago. So, I went to the planning board and got their input on the planning board fees, they've increased those to 250 for each application review process. I held the cost per thousand on building permits to where they were. That's most of it, except for the research was the other line in there.
Explain that to us if you would.
Um, there's several different situations. The one we've seen most commonly is somebody has a camp that's been in the family or they've purchased recently, or it's going up for sale. We'll get the appraiser, the, both realtors, the sellers, the buyers will all get involved, and the banks are looking for a letter from us saying that there's no issues out there, there's no code violations, there's nothing whatsoever out there. So, when we hold the 1989 assessor card with the property building footprint with today's and we hold them up to the light, and there's all these new decks and additions and things like that, then we go through the permitting process and look in the file to see a deck in 89, an addition in 7, you know, and, and we try to justify everything that is legally. Quite often, a lot of it isn't. So, we have three we're going through right now, and once they get the answer that the deck has to be removed, the addition's this, and, and it's too close to the water, when we're looking at it, they don't get the answer they want, so they've gone away. So, they, the, out of the three we're dealing with, the first one didn't get their answer, so they've gone away, but we've got 10, 15 hours into reviewing of it already. And if we're looking at a user-based fee system, that person should be paying for our research and, and looking into that so we can come, come to a conclusion. That usually involves a site visit, going out, taking a, looking at it, researching the old files that aren't very good, a lot of them are vague, and as soon as it's vague or whatever, tie goes to the runner, we'll always go to the property owner for that to get what we get. But, like I said, the last one we were working on that didn't turn out to the property owner's advantage they wanted was 10 feet away from the lake and the permit on his site plan he submitted back in the eighties had him at 30 feet away from the lake. So, and, and there was encroachment on the two sides and things like that. That's one of the issues that we usually deal with a lot of stuff, it's just somebody's looking for a lot of information on a specific issue. I know there was a question, is this Freedom of Information Act? Freedom of Information Act is, I want all the information for lot 265, map 265 lot six, here's the file. I mean, we can give you that easy. It's when they want a letter from us saying there are no issues out there and we've gotta do a ton of research time to, to look at it and say, these are your issues to come into compliance, and then we can move forward in that way. Or, we say, we don't have the time to deal with that, and that's kind of where we're at now. So, we tell most people, we can only do one of those old and for sales at a time. When we rectify the one we're dealing with, we'll move on to the next one, because there is no fees for it, we don't charge any money for it, and we just absorbs a ton of time, and when they don't get the answers they want, then they just move on. Whether they go ahead with the sale and the buyer has some inclination that he's got issues out there, or they lose the buyer and try to resell and come back with another, another avenue for it. But, it's just an area that we're just, it boggs us down, slows us down dramatically, and not to say if there isn't a revenue based for it, we'd address it quicker, but when we've got people waiting for permits and inspections, those are more of a priority than these here. And the first hour was free, is how we worded that. So, we can do some research, get a, get a good grasp of it, but once we start doing site visits and really digging into the file to try to put old planning board minutes together for what they were approved for and what they actually have out there, it takes a tremendous amount of time.
So, how often, do you, did you say you get these?
We tell them we can only do one at a time, and we've got three that we've done in the past two months that we have just waiting. And of course, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars with these seals, and most of them are all waterfront properties, and we want to help the realtors before they list it, we'd love to deal with it, and we've got a few realtors that come in, they wanna look at the file, they wanna pull it all apart, they wanna go through with it. One, we really didn't even address, it's not one of the three we have, is it, is living space above the garage, and then there's a, the regular house, and somebody came in for dump permits a couple of months ago and town clerk flagged it to us that there's two residences out there, and we're like, yeah, we know, but we can't address it at this time, we just don't have the staffing for it. And oddly enough, nothing ever goes away, it's just a matter of time till either they come in for permits or it's going up for sale. Even refinancing, if you're doing a refinance, they want flood zone certification, they want a ton of stuff for us, and it's just hard for us to find the time to, to get to it.
I think as far as the schedule goes, I'm okay with it, with the exception of the research side at this point. Everything else I think is pretty much in line, I don't know. I understand there's a lot of work to that, but I think we could.
One has the research, one doesn't.
So.
Yeah, I was gonna say if, I mean, I, if you need something signed tonight, I think I would sign the one without the research line.
Yep.
Yeah, and we're just looking for direction from you guys. We're gonna call it not a priority, we're gonna set it on the side, and if they want more action, we'll send them to the proper channels, so.
So, page number two.
This one here, I think we got one here that's.
That's the one without the research, the serious announcement, that's removed.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to sign the fee schedule proposed by Ken Paul, CEO.
I'll second that.
The one without the research.
The one without the research line.
Moved and seconded to sign the fee schedule, updated fee schedule, without additional fees for research, further discussion?
Nope.
Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed? Jennifer, do you wanna get copies of that and get it to Ken tomorrow?
Sure. I can take it and bring it to you tomorrow.
Yeah. Yep. Great, thank you. Land use hours.
So, what we'd like to do is publicize that our walk-in hours, just walk in the street and come in, bring whatever you want, it's the first two hours of any day that we're open. Now, it's published as Tuesday from 1:00 to 4:00 and Thursday's 6, 4:00 to 6:30 or something like that. We'd like to just publicize that, so it's the first two hours of every day. Again, we go in with the expectation of getting a lot of things done, and it seems like at the end of the day, we look back and we're like, the desk is worse than it was when we started, we didn't accomplish anything today. So, we'd like to get a little bit more structure into it, that we were in plan review, we've got the file open, we're doing a bunch of research, to drop it, clear your mind, talk to this person, which burns up 45 minutes, half hour, hour, very easily. We'd like to get that structured, so either they have an appointment and come in and we block them out for that, or it's just simple walk-in stuff. That would allow also the clerk downstairs to take, she would be available at any time to bring stuff in if you had applications and things like that, that you'd be able to just bring in whatever you had and leave it with her or sit down and talk with her as well too.
Okay. So, the first two hours of any day you're open, people can walk in, but if they have more than like an hour's worth of, you probably would like them to schedule appointments, right?
Correct. If we knew somebody was coming in that would grab us time to pull the file, have the file ready, be, and set time aside, we're clearly, this is your time, we have that there with you.
Okay, just so people know.
Yeah. And the 1:00 to 4:00, that's been there for 20, over 20 years or so, so it's gonna take several years to critique that into where we would wanna go with it. So, it'd be a learning curve on that.
So, you're open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
And the two Saturdays.
Two Saturdays, okay.
Yeah.
So, you're actually adding more walk-in hours?
Mathematically, yes.
Yep.
But, it's walk-in anytime right now.
Is there any, is there ever a time when someone can walk in, fill out a permit, application and walk out with a permit?
Uh, simple electrical plumbing, mechanical stuff, yes. It gets more complicated when you're in the shoreline zone, something as simple as a generator, we had somebody last fall, for whatever reason, wanted the generator in front of the house down by the lake, digging the trench up for the propane bottles and things like that. Those get a little bit more complicated and we'll review those prior to going out. We'd rather catch anything on paper versus going out there and seeing the generator and making a move. That wasn't, we don't want that.
Okay.
So, how are you handling walk-ins now that aren't scheduled on your?
Um, we drop everything and deal with them, and nothing gets done normally, that we had planned to do that day, unless it's inspections or things like that.
Mm-hmm.
You wanna think about it and?
Yeah, I mean, it.
See idea over round?
Yeah, it makes sense, I feel like I need to sit down there and see what goes on.
Yeah.
It makes sense consistency-wise, as far as, you know, not interrupting, you know, a big project that you have going on, but it, but at the same time, it's, I don't know how I'd feel if I walked in on one of those non-walk-in hours and I'm like, this is the time I have off, you can't talk with me now.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying? I don't know how the public's gonna handle that.
But, again, if I was dealing with somebody else at that time, you don't have an appointment, it's the old nine X thing, you should've called for us, should've scheduled it. And if your, if your time's that valuable, ours should be just as well too. And again, it's the stack of stuff on our desk that just is not getting done. We've got so many violations out there that are not being addressed because they're going through Brenda's office first and she's dropping whatever she's doing, dealing with the people that are walking through. So, I'm somewhat sheltered, but it doesn't take long and the questions get too complicated, and, you know, do you have time for him? He drove up from Mass or he's, you know, came over from wherever. It seems like when people drive an hour that we should drop everything for them, and that's, that's anybody coming from the seacoast, a lot of the contractors are like that.
Yep. Then again, if they're coming up to ask questions, they should be making an appointment.
Send an email.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not difficult.
No.
So, yeah, yeah, I know other towns that are like that.
And that's where we got it from. We were looking at Kenny Bunk, they have counter time, 8:00 to 10:00 or something like that every morning, there's specific time that you're sitting at the counter, that you're just waiting for people to come in and, you know, off-the-ball questions and things like that.
Yep. Okay. We'll ponder it and get back to you.
Yeah.
One other thing I just wanted to clarify, a resident brought in a slideshow, presentation from your Road Commissioners, and it showed me making almost $40 an hour. That's if I worked 35 hours a week. If we wanna talk, the week of May 26, I made $20.25 an hour. June 2nd was $22 an hour. So, there's another side of that as well, and I don't wanna sound petty or anything, but it's more these numbers than the other numbers.
As with a lot of us on salary, but they, the number, the.
The footnote would've been nice that said, this is salary when they do work salaries and they don't, so.
Okay.
Yep.
But, just, just, 'cause budget season's coming, and of course, they wanted to know what they were getting for their money, the resident that came down and asked us, so.
Yeah, I know everybody that's on salary here work above and beyond.
Yep.
So.
Awesome. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else you wanna discuss on the land use hours? Let's think it over and put it on for next week?
Yeah.
Okay. Letter agreement.
This is the letter from the Road Bridge that I emailed you guys in regards to the agreement for the bid that you awarded.
Okay, oh, this is for the engineering work?
Correct.
The bridge. Lump sum of $10,600, and we, what did we get, $17,000?
18.
$18,000 was the.
The second one.
Yeah. How much did we have for?
Up to 20.
Up to 20, okay. And this is, is the Road, the Road Committee seen this?
Yeah, I emailed it to all of you. He replied with some concerns and I replied back, I think we're on the same page.
Regarding the timeline.
Right.
Okay. Okay, do we wanna hear from?
We want, we want, we hear from who?
Road Committee?
No, I think, I think the, the issue's where we wanted to have it done sooner than June.
Oh, okay.
So, that we could figure out what sort of number we need to put on the warrant. They're gonna get as much done as they can before the ice and the snow melt, they need to see under without ice and snow.
Okay. Yep.
Would be too late.
Okay.
Right, but I mean, budgets were essentially due last Friday, so we're not, you know, that's going to be a late insert anyways, and we can't do anything without the, without Mother Nature, because, I mean, they know we have to spend the funds before June thirtieth, so that's where that date came from, but there's nothing we can do until they can get down there.
Right.
And they're not going to get paid until it's done, but your warrant will probably be well-written before you get a number from them, depending on the weather.
Okay. That's right, okay.
There's not a lot of, anybody can do about that.
Yeah. Okay. What's your wishes?
I make a motion to sign the letter agreement from HEB Engineers.
I'll second that.
With a dollar amount of ten thousand six hundred dollars. Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? This is just a place for one signature on this, so. Okay. Okay, nineteen twenty, proposed budget.
This is from the treasurer. This is based on the numbers as of last Friday. Based on some of your earlier conversations, I'll have her make some adjustments, so you can look over all the other departments except for land use, see where some of the blanks are. Otherwise, we've got most of them in.
Okay. Okay, you want to look this over and?
Yeah.
Get back on it?
Some of them are kind of darked out with nothing, some are darked out with, with-
Ones that are darked out are missing numbers, like on the first page Trio Software.
Got a couple pages in, there's one dark, and it does have a number.
Like the fire truck fund, he's looking for a hundred thousand to go in there.
Okay.
So the board, she graded out the areas that you gave me instruction that you were unsure about.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Right, until after tomorrow night's public hearing. The board will have to make a decision, so we've got to get a budget in of some sort. Yeah, we'll schedule a workshop as soon as they make a decision after tomorrow night.
Sounds like they've already made a decision. Maybe we don't need another public hearing.
No, we do need a public hearing. Yeah. The public needs to weigh in on it. Thank you. Okay, yeah, we'll look that over and work on that. Okay, S.A. McLean and Sons' bill.
This is the bill that Michelle emailed you about in regards to the chain.
Thank you. Okay, this was for a chain, for a sander, for, I believe, District One. Okay. And then in the past, we've done cutting edges and bolts. I don't think we've ever paid for a chain. Dave, you want to give us some background on this?
For our conversation, Sleutman-Waltz here, when I called you to ask you what your thought was, and during our conversation, like I said, we, we were approached and asked, can we help the town out? What we, we've put out thus far, so far this year in product, is like three years of what, once a young farm puts out on our private roads. More, you know, if we knew we were going into this, we were going to be the, taking care of these roads, we would have been up the par. And looking at it, it's nine hundred some odd dollars. So, as, as the old saying is, is that if you don't ask the question, you don't get an answer, you, you don't know. So I asked the question. So Sleutman-Waltz said, you know, "Give the treasurer a call and see, and we'll, we'll see what the body thinks." And if we don't want to cross that bridge, that's no problem, give me the bill, we'll run them out a check, and we'll take care of it. But I just figured I'd ask. You know, I went into the winter season thinking I was going to be taking care of fifty-four miles of lane road through the winter, so that's all I asked. You know, if, if it works out, wonderful, but doesn't, no hard feelings, we just keep on moving forward and keep on going, so.
Okay. Yep. So this total bill is fifteen fifty.
It's just the chain piece of-
Nine hundred of it is the chain, and there is a carbide edge on here, which is a cutting edge for six fifty, which we normally do take care of. So, the nine hundred is the amount in question. I can understand Dave's thinking on it, you know, and the fact is, the materials. What's your thoughts about maybe splitting it?
I, I think that, you know, he stepped up and was helping us out, and he's putting a lot more hours than he would normally put on it, so I, I say half the chain is doable.
How's that, Dave? Is that? Okay.
I just, I asked the question.
Yep. Make a motion to pay for four hundred and fifty dollars of the chain for District One.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Hand that back over to Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, resignations. Okay, we have got, dated February fifth, Porter Sleutman. Effective immediately, I hereby resign my Town of Acton EMA Director and E-911 Operator. It's been a pleasure working with the Town of Acton. It's just now time for him to retire and enjoy. Bill Catanze.
Oh, didn't see that coming.
No.
I'm so sorry to lose him.
Yeah.
Hopefully he enjoys his retirement.
I hope so.
Yeah. Yeah. Me, too.
So what's your wishes?
I, with regret, accept, I make a motion to accept Bill Catanze's resignation as EMA Director and E-911 Coordinator or Operator.
I'll second that.
Moving to second any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. So I guess we can advertise for that position.
Okay.
Okay. Next on the list is Emery Mills Dam. And that's my category. We had a meeting yesterday with, this is the first time you guys have heard this, meeting yesterday with Sanford and Chapley, as we have, as needed or quarterly. We've been working with a company called GZA Engineering, how to have them look at the dam and figure out what's going on. There is a leak in the dam. I won't say substantial, but it's, it's in need of work. There's enough water flowing through it that it's causing some concerns. They did a dye test on it, exactly when they did that, sometime within the last couple of months, where they actually put some dye in the water on the upward side, the lakeside, on a long pole, and they get it down to where they believe the leaks are. And it was about ten minutes, it was coming out the other side, on the, on the outfall side, through the dam. And as it leaks through, it's, it's also taking fines and whatnot with it. So it's something that needs to be repaired. We, actually, that was done back a long, back quite a little while ago. So they put out a, a questionnaire, not a questionnaire, but a request for bid, to have someone come in and repair that. GZA took care of a lot of that. And the numbers that came back were astronomical. I'm talking four hundred plus thousand. And the group said, "This isn't going, this, no, we can't do that." Sanford does have in place through, I don't think it's Inland Fisheries, but it may be, an interest-free hundred thousand dollar loan that is already in place, and that's what we were hoping to be able to get the whole project done for. So the four hundred thousand came in, and like I said, it was more than that, and we put the brakes on that. So they went back to GZA, said, "Look, we've got to come up with another way." And they did come up with another way. The other way is going to be just shy of two hundred thousand. Now, there's three towns involved in this. So you look, it's around a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, but I'm just using two hundred as a round number because you know how things go. So, the way we're into this agreement with Chapley and Sanford, we're in it for twenty-five percent, Chapley's in it for twenty-five percent, Sanford's in it for fifty, for fifty percent. So if you use the two hundred thousand dollar number, which is, is a little high, as far as the numbers they gave us yesterday, we'd be in it for fifty thousand dollars. Keep in mind, there's only, there's only one interest-free loan right now that can be used towards this for a hundred thousand. They are going back to, I believe that was Inland Fisheries, to see if that can be up, number-wise. They think it may be able to. A lot of the people in the right places are supporting it, if, if it is possible. Trying to think of the gentleman's name, the, the dam inspector for the state of Maine, anyway. A real nice guy, knows exactly what he's talking about. He supports it a hundred percent, so. I just wanted to bring this forward to let everybody know, this is kind of what we're looking at. If it goes forward and the work can get done, it's looking to get done this fall, the fall of 2019. They've got to drain, drain the dam, drain the lake down some. And by some, I mean, they're looking to drain it down two, uh, two feet below the normal October, the normal low-water mark. I don't know, I can't tell you what that is in inches or feet, but it takes it down substantial. They don't think there's, there's no issues with it coming back up again. But if they do it this fall, that would, you know, it brings it down. They may, there is some talk, there was some talk yesterday about maybe bringing it down further, because the, what they're looking to do, bring the water level down, they've got to get a roadway in, and that's, that number covers all this, brings a roadway in from the back of John Galant's property, who was in Chapley, he owns Stony Road Septic, and he's also the dam keeper, the gatekeeper on that, as was his father before him. So, construct a roadway in behind there to get into this side of the dam. The other side of the dam has a roadway in, but the work they've got to do is on this side of the dam. So get in there, get that constructed, go in, remove material on the upward side, the lakeside, get down to where they believe the leaks are. They've got some sort of a mat-type membrane that is clay and, clay impregnated, that they would lay in. They would then put, I believe it was, I think it was sand over that, crushed stone, and then riprap back in. Don't, don't hold me to those exact way, but the riprap was on the top. And there's some thought to maybe moving that mat down some, which would mean lowering the lake a little more, to be able to just to get it down into where some of them feel that it may, the problem may be, just to ensure happiness. If the water level's up a little high, it's, it's not too bad, the more the problems are down below. So, but so it means, anyway, getting, bringing the lake level down, and that may be down another foot or two, below the two-foot mark, to do, which is twofold. They did say it will not affect the lake level on Square Pond, because that was a question yesterday. Square does flow into, into Mousam. You know, the recovery would take a little bit longer, but you've got all winter, depending on snow and rainfall and, you know, all that. It's, it's a huge watershed area to bring that back up again. But they do feel that the, oh, and, and, so if it does get drawn down, either to the two-foot mark or below that, it's also a great opportunity for anybody on the lake to do work on retaining walls, whatever, whatever they may have on the waterside, you know, if they have issues. Because it's, I won't say it's a once-in-a-lifetime effort, but, to do, but the lake level will be down substantial to be able to do that. Keep in mind, if you are hearing me talk about this, and you're thinking, "Boy, I do have a problem with my wall", get your permits. No work will be done without the permits, so.
Have to rip it out after putting it in.
Exactly, because we're not lowering the lake back down again to rip it out. But it will come out, one way or the other.
Yep.
So, and the fines can be immense on that, so. So it's just a thought, but I just wanted to put that forward. I know we do have some money put away. I don't know what the dollar amount is, which we don't know right now, we'll get that from Michelle. To see what we have for, you know, in the coffers for helping to take care of this. The interest-free loan is a five-year, interest-free. So, when it was a hundred thousand dollars, we were into it for twenty-five thousand, which is five thousand a year, which is definitely in the, in the budget. So, we'll have to find out about the additional here and see where that goes, so. It's just an update. Like I said, that was yesterday morning at, at eight o'clock, we had the meeting at Sanford. So, we'll see how it goes. I'm sure Jennifer will get updated in Chapley tonight on that, on her side, and so. I believe that's all the information I had on that, so. Like I said, that's just a, an update, so. Okay. Public comment? Anyone from the public? Oh, good.
It's been a while, Mr. Chairman.
It's fine. Good to see you. How are you, Dennis?
Uh, I probably should have seen if I could be on the agenda tonight, and I'll ask that if I can't keep within my three minutes, you give me a little bit of leeway, as long as I keep it under four. The Garvin Road that David spoke about tonight was brought to you guys' attention a year ago, and this has been a problem on and off for at least forty years. And they wanted to wait, and as I remember, to see what happened this winter and this spring. Well, we found out, and down at Wilson Lake and down on the lower road, they've got the same problem again, and there's a good chance that the weather stays the way it is, this spring, the water's going to be coming down, so they're pretty darn good. The other thing with you agreeing to pay for half that bed chain tonight, that goes against what the town meeting voted. We pay ten dollars an hour for those sanders, and that's supposed to cover the cost in repairs, that's what all these rates are set up for. I understand what David said, and I don't even disagree with him about asking. But it goes against what town meeting voted. The other thing, now I'm going to move off the roads, is with code enforcement. I don't know how many people understand the reason why the fees are set up for code enforcement, was to pay for code enforcement. That was the reason why the town started charging. And, so I think when code enforcement, especially with the experience that we have, thinks he needs something, or thinks something needs to be done, I, I really think, unless there's some real reason not to support what he wants, I really think we need to pay real close attention to what his needs are downstairs. The other thing I'd like to speak about is APAT. My grandchildren were nice enough this last week to show me, well, I could watch YouTube on the television, as long as they put on there whatever I wanted to see. The Sleutmans' meetings and the school board meetings are pretty good, but the meetings downstairs, lots of times, i- it's set up with like one microphone, so there's people you can't hear when they talk at all. And some of the applicants, say, at planning board, you can't hear what they're saying. I'm all for taping, taping the thing, but it doesn't do a lot of good if, when you're watching it, you can't hear everything that's being said.
I think we just had a conversation about this in the last week.
It's been brought up.
And-
Add a, a system like this down there.
Okay. And the other thing is, I watched the rec meeting we had the other night. I say "we," it wasn't me, but Elise and I both stayed for it. And there's certain rec members that you can't hear, because they don't have the enough microphones, or set up whatever, and Elise and I talking at the podium, there's no microphone. Even with my loud mouth, you couldn't hear really what I was saying. And Elise, you just saw her standing there. So it's, if we're going to put this stuff out on TV, I think APAT needs to pay more attention, because they said that they spend three to four hours for an hour meeting. And there's really no sense in putting a video on if you can't hear the words.
Okay.
Thank you.
We request that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Eric had a question.
I just wanted to say in regards to the microphones, if we had enough mics, we wouldn't, it's not about not paying attention, if we don't have enough mics.
Okay.
Is it just these four?
Is this all we have?
Okay, more mics.
We have two more mics. It's, it's not a big deal for me to set up two more mics.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe we ought to some mics.
Corey puts that in his budget.
Thank you.
Leslie Berlin. I watched the last meeting, and there was some discussion about recommendations of changing auditors every- recommendations of changing auditors every five years, preferably, you know, preferably five years, no longer than seven. So I was looking for a status update on that.
Well, our auditors left. So even if we stay with the company that we're with, it's going to be a new set of eyes looking at it. But we are putting it out, we're getting quotes for other places as well, because our contract's up.
Forthgoing, are we going to be changing every five years?
Don't know.
I don't know.
Right. Because it is a recommendation.
How long are the contracts for anyways?
You can sign them one to three years, that's up to you.
Okay.
They could be year to year.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Question about, since we signed the HEB contract tonight, has anyone had contact with Milton Mills, or Milton concerning the work that's going to be being done? And what potential is for moving forward with a, with some type of bridge repair? I know we had talked about having meetings, and then we held off on the one with Sanbornville or Wakefield concerning Canal Bridge, because they're looking at twenty-twenty-six. My guess would be if Milton gets involved in it, they're talking, they're going to be talking twenty-twenty-six or later than that, as it is now. So I think we ought to at least touch base with them and let them know what we're doing. There was a second thing I.
Did we have a contact person for Milton Mills?
Matt Smith is who we want to talk to at the highway department.
We could forward him a copy of the letter that we just signed?
Okay.
And concerning the dam that, Ed, you were just talking about, I think one of the things that needs to be considered also is with inland games and fisheries, is talking to them not only about a, a interest-free loan, but also about a grant. And if they'd be willing to supply some type of a grant.
Yeah, Sanford's looked into all that. There wasn't anything available.
Okay, but again, to the end of twenty nineteen, who knows?
Thank you.
Thanks.
I apologize, I found a note in my envelope. On my District One roads up on the H Road, I've got six hazard trees. They were marked out through the summer by the previous road commissioner, and they just never got followed through and stuff. Excuse me, I've got six of them there. They are dead. A couple of them are, you know, maybe once a month we've got some limbs, so on and so forth. Then I've got three on Acton Ridge. I don't know what's in numbers or whatever, but they were, they have been marked with X's and supposed to have been addressed. Do you want me to follow through, get a daily price from Abbott Hill, grinding like we did before?
Yeah, get a price, and we can take it, sit down with your budget line.
All right, so we'll continue on that. So that takes care of it. The other thing with the, with the, with the dam, now, you mentioned that, Sleutman-Waltch, that over the years, we did vote over the years to put money into account for, is it correct, Jennifer, right?
For some, it's for maintenance, but not for the big project. So, yeah, we do have some money, but yes.
Okay, so what's the, I know it's in the planning stage and all, but who's going to, we're going to have a contingency plan. Let's say this doesn't work, or things go, is the general taking the whole blunt of this? Because even though we can hold water back at Mill Dam in Springville, and we can hold water back at Number One Dam, Number One Pond Dam, Sanford Sewer District also needs so many CFMs per minute to discharge their sewer water. Or they're going to be in violation with the DEP. And I'm sure this has all been taken care of, so Sanford Sewer District and other bodies south have a lot of input with what goes on. I'm just curious the.
Sanford's, Sanford's taken the whole lead on all that, so that and their EMA Director.
Yep.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they, they feel as though if this dam was to be breached, and it goes down, there was, I think between seven, I want to say seven houses, but I think it was more than that that are in imminent danger. They would be gone if it, if it went. And then, of course, further down, the ponds and the other dams would take the brunt.
But we all, we all know that that's, you know, we need, we've known it for years, we need to put money into it. It's part of our income and, and everything, so.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Joyce Backshee. Last spring, summer, we, I talked about speed limits, and we had some very unfortunate accidents. And having daughters who are left-handed, I think I recognized your handwriting, Jennifer. I got a copy of the state report on Route one oh nine. And I'd just like to say, in particular for the people who had losses or were hurt in accidents, that I'm glad the town went ahead and had something done. And the state, you know, while we all know that, as I like to say, that most accidents are caused by the loose nut behind the wheel, not the car itself, but something is being done on a positive nature, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Robinham, I was just wondering what the board's feeling and the public's feeling would be to go to a five-man, or five-person, excuse me, Sleutman Board? If you guys would be in favor of it, and what the public would think about going to a five-person? So I'm just here for feedback from you people.
Is there a certain reason why?
Well, it's been an ongoing for many, 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 many years. And being a little man on the totem post, and I know, don't usually say much, I've seen throughout the years that, I won't say, two people could get together and say, hey, vote my way. And that third person is just, it's harder to get two people to go away than it is one person to go away. So I think, and I believe, the school used to be a three-person, now they're going to a five-person, and it seems to be a lot better, because they have more minds thinking different. And it's not one person out, or two people outvoting one person. I think the town would benefit with a five-person. And I'm just, like I said, just throwing it out here for, for discussion.
No, that's good. I just don't know if the town's big enough to need five.
I, the, the, the feedback that I've got from the public, they're all for it. I'm just looking for your opinion right now.
Most of the towns like around us, like, do boards like that size too? Like Chapley and?
I don't, I can't think of any five.
Even towns our size.
I don't, don't know, so I'm asking.
I didn't go in that root of it, but I'm just asking to see what your three opinions on it would be. I know the public is, the people that I spoke to, I won't say the whole public, but the people that I've spoke to lately, is, is favor for it.
Well, I think that's, I think that the current issue that is being talked about now is the road commissioner. And I think that a lot of people think it's two to one, and I don't think that's the case.
Well, no, you know, this has been, like I said, this has been going on with Johnny Hobbs, who there, that he had the three, you know, Winchell, you know. Every, every board has been that way. And I don't think anybody really pressed it. Now, I'm just kind of going, it's kind of, more and more, as years go on, you can see the trend. So I'm just throwing it out there, that's all. Just something to think about.
We can look into it and do some reading.
I don't, personally, I don't think the town's big enough for it. You know, three, I think the three, I've worked with two other individuals on this board. It hasn't always been an unanimous vote on things, which is healthy, really. You know, I, we discuss a lot of things and try to come to a happy medium. I guess I'd have to say that I'm not overly in favor of it. I mean, it's more of a cost to the town. You know, they'd have to add another.
I have to admit that it's really hard to get just the three of us together. I would have, I mean, to get five people who are working different jobs.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty difficult.
I don't think we've ever canceled a meeting because two of us couldn't make it. Last week was close, but we, we made it, so. Yeah, I guess I just have to say, I don't think the town's quite big enough for it yet. I know bigger towns do have a five-member board, so this is my two cents worth.
I'd like to think about it a little bit and maybe do some research.
There you go.
Just because it's not something I.
Yeah, I'm not going to shut the door on it, but. Okay.
All right.
Any other public comments? Nope, okay, announcements. We have, meetings are on the website. Conservation Forest Committee will hold a meeting. We've got a public input on the management plan for February twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven o'clock, and that is being held upstairs here, okay? Nothing else there? Anything from the library?
Uh, no.
No? I guess they had a great time, not library referenced, but I guess they had a great time at the sledding paddy.
Somebody came in and said the same thing. It was huge. They said, it looked like the whole town was there.
Yep, so, and the ice skating rink has been doing great.
Yep.
So, good. Anything else?
No.
Anything, Kim?
I don't.
Anything, Jennifer?
No, sir.
Nope, okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Move to second to adjourn, all in favor? Night all.